Welcome to the October 9 Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is Issaquah Hobart Road Traffic Volume Statistics. The second is Public Safety Update, Traffic Enforcement, Workload and Crime Data. Both of these items are for discussion only. Let's start with Issaquah Hobart Road Traffic Volume Statistics presented by Sheldon Lin, Public Works Engineering Director.
Hi Chair.
Hi Bob.
Unfortunately, we're having a little technical difficulty on the Issaquah Hobart Road presentation.
Okay.
So if it's okay, we could start with crime.
Sure.
And the police chief, and then we'll come back to this one.
Chief Beerbaum, would you be ready to present first? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Chief Scott Beerbaum, thank you for letting me be here to talk a little bit about our public safety presentation and from everything from traffic enforcement to our workload analysis and kind of our crime statistics. How we got here was based off of a conversation we had a couple months ago or last month regarding the red light study. And it evolved from some of the questions that came up from that conversation which had to do with questions surrounding traffic enforcement specifically in and around those intersections that were studied during the red light study, which then evolved into a conversation, a bigger conversation about traffic enforcement in general. But to be able to talk about that properly, then we need to also discuss department workload and then also as part of this, that bleeds into the crime statistics conversation. So this is a, we're going to have a little journey through kind of like the status and the past history of how we got to where we are today. So in reviewing the, I'm sorry, I needed justice, in reviewing the presentation from the red light study, there were five main questions that kind of came out of the council comments. And although we weren't able to address all of them that night, tonight we'll hopefully be able to address them throughout the presentation and we can kind of get at them. The five questions were what can we do to change bad driving behavior? How many injuries were due to the collisions at the intersection in the study? What can we do to enforce the laws? How many red light tickets have been issued at the identified intersections? And what do our enforcement levels look like? As well as what types of violations are we addressing? And again, that's kind of a summation of the council comments from that presentation night. We'll kind of step into the first part of it. How do we address bad driving behaviors? We usually utilize the three Es of enforcement, education and engineering. And during that process, enforcement of course is accomplished through the presence of our police officers throughout the city and also through citations. And that's usually driven from officer initiative, emphasis patrols and also like our assigned traffic division. Now, the officer initiative and that just basically means that if an officer is on routine patrol and they observe a violation in front of them, they have the ability to affect a traffic stop and contact that driver to, you know, talk about their driving behaviors. The education portion consists of like that warning. So when we do a traffic stop, the officers have the ability to either issue a citation or of course educate the driver on what they maybe just did wrong. We also utilize our social media platforms through the cities to advise our community members on proper driving laws, emphasis patrols as well, giving them a heads up that we are going to be doing those. We utilize a community resource officer as well to connect with our community members in the different neighborhoods. Perhaps a neighborhood issue pops up and then we're able to connect with the neighborhoods and advise them that this issue is being reported to us and that we can hopefully address it. As well as the school resource officer works within the schools and interacts in the driver's education programs and it connects with the families in some of the neighborhoods surrounding the schools. The engineering portion of the aspect of, you know, we partner with the public works engineering to take a look at some of our locations or intersections and like, for example, we've identified like a driveway that's pointing out of like a certain business complex in the past and we had collisions there. And we, it was through redesign of the roadway, providing a turn pocket has reduced collisions in that location. So again, that's part of that engineering, we're able to provide people safer alternatives for driving or hopefully influencing their driving behaviors. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask while, as I'm going through this. What can we do to enforce the laws? Hopefully, I'll be able to talk a little bit about that throughout this presentation. But it's everything from, it really comes down to is, is capacity and workload. How much time and availability do our staff have to address the different traffic complaints and the different issues that are observed through, throughout our community? But we can utilize our sworn staff and we also have some alternatives that we're looking into and I'll address a little bit later in the presentation as well. How many injuries were due to the collisions at intersections identified in the study? We did answer that that night, but I'll bring it up again and we didn't have any injuries in those collisions that were identified in the study in those red lights.
I'd also ask for how many red light citations at those intersections?
Yes.
Is that one of the, okay, great, thanks.
Great segue. That is the next slide, yes. So what has been the enforcement at the identified intersections? And what this, what the graph provided is, addresses general enforcement and then also red light. The top number is general enforcement and the bottom is, is red light at those specific intersections. It should be in the presentation packet. The attached presentation. So as part of this, the general citations have everything to do with like the failure to stop, failure to yield, fail to follow signal, falling too close, inattentive driving, prohibited U-turns, reckless driving, failed to yield to pedestrians, improper turns blocking intersection. Those, those are like the general ones. But specifically, the bottom numbers for each one of those intersections identifies, you know, fail to stop due to a red light.
Say that again, which one identifies failure to stop?
I'm sorry, the bottom number of each call, or each row.
Okay.
The, the top number is general numbers of citations and then specifically the bottom of each row is the actual red light citations.
So is that all?
Yeah.
Well, the first one, 2013, 16 and then five.
Correct, 16 general and then five red light.
Five is included in the 16?
Correct, yes, yep. So to kind of give you a perspective of how traffic enforcement is determined and how we apply it throughout our community, we base it off of citizens' requests or complaints. Obviously, officer initiated, so if an officer observes a violation in front of them, they will have the ability to affect a traffic stop. And then we utilize some of the collision data.
Question?
Yes.
Officer initiated, earlier, a moment ago, you said if an officer was on routine patrol.
Correct.
Could you describe how that might, what, like nonroutine or something other than routine patrol?
Sure, I apologize, yes. Yeah, so I'll take a step back further. So obviously, our staff is divided into different divisions within our police department. We have the uniformed officers that you see basically every day on the street who respond to all types of calls for service, from a 911 call to a collision, to a theft report, et cetera. Then we have a dedicated traffic officer who is really, his sole mission is to address traffic enforcement within the community. So what I meant by routine patrol is, is when an officer, a patrol officer who is assigned to respond to calls for service may be traveling from one call to another or traveling to another neighborhood just to ensure that there, that there is no criminal activity or there's anything going on in the area, could be driving down the road and observe some sort of a traffic infraction, whether it's an improper turn, improper signal, someone's using a handheld device while driving, et cetera. So basically, it's someone who is normally assigned to responding to calls for service, but then they can deviate from that to address maybe a traffic enforcement issue.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. And I assume also there is some like nonroutine where there might be some emergency or something that they're responding to or specifically.
Correct, yes, yes. It's a balance of responding for calls for service and then if they don't, they have unassigned time. So that's kind of that workload analysis where do, does an officer have a call for service that they are responsible for at that moment? Or are they in between calls? Are they in between actual call and maybe writing a report? And do they have the ability to divert and to address that traffic behavior?
Yeah, and so you just touched upon the last part of my question then. I've heard, you know, people have asked me, hey, I've seen an officer had, he was right there or she was right there and didn't do anything. They ran in their car and didn't do anything. I mean, what, what would be the circumstances?
That's an excellent question.
And then we're talking about traffic, like a traffic violation. So that was what, what's observed.
Right, exactly. And you guys are doing really well at helping me segue into each next part because that next part there, factors impacting traffic enforcement. So we talk about that workload priority. So there are times when our officers are responding to a call for service where we could just, we might not be driving with our lights and sirens on because we don't drive with our lights and sirens to every type of call. That varies depending upon the type of call that we are going to. However, we could be, we could observe somebody do something, but what we do is we balance the, the risk of going after that individual to what we could create. So for example, if we were doing red light enforcement where to observe somebody do a red light violation, we have to sit before the intersection so we can see the stop line and we need to be able to see the green light and then it change from yellow to red. We need to be able to observe the vehicle cross the red, or the stop line after the light has turned to red. So if we are sitting on the one side of the intersection and we watch somebody do that, we then have to evaluate, do we go after that individual? Because if we did, we'd have to turn lights and sirens and we would have to go through that same intersection that might be a red light. So we would have to evaluate whether or not we go after them. Do we create more risk to our community by going after that violator? There's also sometimes too, is if they could be facing, going the other way, turning in a U-turn in front of traffic to avoid collisions, things like that. So there's a lot of that evaluating risk versus what the actual violation was. So there are, there's that. There's, they could be assigned to another call for service that they're en route so that they don't address that. There's, there's a whole myriad of reasons for that. So that factors impacting traffic enforcement. Getting back to that, we're going to talk a little bit more about workload and kind of explain what we've seen over the last 10 years from our calls for service for, you know, what the public is calling in for 911 calls, calling in for reporting crimes, and then looking at a little bit our staffing. Staffing is again, if we only have three officers on the street in our community and they're responding for calls for service, they might not be able to do the traffic enforcement as well. And same with the engineering piece. We've actually had some locations, so there's been some areas where we've done emphasis patrols in the past such as Northwest Gilman and State Route 900 in the past where we would address people blocking the box or turning against, you know, red lights. And at one point in time, that intersection allowed us to actually park on State Route 900 on the shoulder to wait for people to block the box and then we can wave them over and we can address that issue. With the redesign of the roadway, there's no longer a shoulder there to be able to safely do that. We can't position a patrol car there, it's just wouldn't be safe. So some of, as we grow, as we change some of our roadways, that changes our ability to address certain infractions or certain driving behaviors. So this is like the totality of how we address it. So that's the engineering piece for that factors impacting traffic enforcement. You have another question?
Yeah, I did, if I may. You, you did mention dedicated traffic officer.
Yes.
Did you say a little bit more about that? Is it truly dedicated? One time you had said to me that sometimes based upon current, you know, demand and staff availability, even a traffic officer may be put on more of a routine patrol or response rather than being able to do traffic enforcement.
Correct, correct actually. Basically, we have only a certain amount of resources and if the demands for services outpaces that, those amount of resources, yes, we're going to have to divert. So we might, there's times, although we have somebody whose assignment is really for traffic enforcement, there are times when we have certain calls for service, it might be a certain crisis call, it might be a certain, you know, domestic violence call, something like that where that traffic officer would get diverted. We've also had over the last several years, some staffing shortages due to injuries, retirements. We've had some long-term illnesses as well that's affected some of our staffing. And so we still have to have that 24-hour coverage for all calls for service and to be able to manage that, we have to spread our staffing throughout that 24 hours. So as a result, there has been times where we've had to move some of our, our traffic officers back to patrol to address that. And we've shown that historically in some of our budget documents of when, how many traffic officers we've had, kind of based on, you might see anywhere from one, two to one to .6, kind of depending upon how many months and how much time they've spent within their designated role. So where that gets into is kind of that, that workload piece. Well, I'll talk a little bit about, yeah, go ahead.
So you have actually explained that to us several times. One of the things I'm having a tough time seeing in the charts is when we have positions and when we have vacant positions.
Yes.
And how that affects calls for service and whether calls for service are divided by actual patrol officers or how do you take into account that we haven't actually been fully staffed for quite a while?
Correct. So there's been technically times where we've been fully staffed, where we actually have FTEs, but they are in training. So one of the conversations too is, is it takes a, you know, nowadays to get an officer from the time we get authorized to fill a position to the time where they're up and running and solely functioning on their own, it's about 12 to 13 months. So there are times over the past few years, and I can give you the, approximately in the last at least three, three and a half years, we've on average been down about three to three and a half, three to four officers per year. And that's due to either because of, and when I say down, is they're not out on the street.
Right.
Where we've had some who have been on like light duty, things like that, where they're still functioning, providing some support, but they're not able to be on the street.
So I guess my question was even simpler.
Sure.
It's more about if you have, shown on a chart, 650 calls for service per officer. Is that based on the reduced number of full complement minus three?
Yes.
So the calls for service we're seeing is not calls for service for all the positions we have?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be an interesting number for me to know is whether, if we were at full complement, what does the trend line look for calls for services?
Yeah.
Because if we don't do it that way, it kind of looks like the officers are getting more calls, but in reality, we have three bodies that aren't on the street most of the time. So that would be an interesting way to see it.
Yes, I hear what you're saying and I do have a few things in there. If we talk about, we can actually track calls for service versus how many sworn we have. And you can also look at our population.
More than sworn, I would do it by FTE that you have.
Yeah, that's, that's, so I'm, so, so there's two, two ways of looking at it. There's 37 sworn police officers, that includes myself, the administrators, all, right? And then you can look at patrol. And patrol is the people that you typically see on the street, right? So we have, we don't have it exactly on there, but if you look at some of the numbers that we've provided within this, within the, within this presentation, for example, we're trending for close to, I believe 900 or so calls for service in 17 for, per officer. And if you looked at, if we had the full complement, we'd be closer to about 750 if everyone was up and running.
Yeah, that's, that would be interesting to see.
So, that's, yeah, so like that's, so we're still trending at a, an increased rate per officer. If you kind of look at it historically, prior to about 2014, we were averaging two to three officers for several years. And so that kind of is actually following, you know, two to three officer, like new hires or in transition, we'll call them, or not really necessarily vacancies, it's a combination of vacancies, unable to, you know, perform their regular duties or in training, things like that. We're looking, averaging about two to three and then we're about three to four these last few years.
Okay.
So even with the addition of staff with, in 2016 because of the grant positions that we received, we've, we're kind of keeping that trend of increase of staff, we're still having that same kind of close to percentage.
Right, so during budget, when we look at data, I'd love to see a complement that was calls per full complement so that we can see the trending if we had filled those positions, because we are looking at three additional positions as well.
So I just wanted to add, not hours, not all hours are created equal. So evening hours, your calls are going to be substantially less. So one of the things we've done in the past, I think during budget presentation to show like frequency, so during high times, you probably remember the times better than I, but it's a little bit better, better measure of like how active the officer is and then how much time we're able to spend per call. Do you want to spend a little bit of time talking about that measure?
Yeah, I think that's, you're referring to like that workload analysis.
Yes.
It's like, you know, what's, what is assigned time? What is the time, you know, there's, I guess it's, what time do you, how much time does an officer have to be, let's say proactive or actively engaging in looking for criminal activity or traffic enforcement, things like that? So that's, I think that's some of the things we talked about in the past.
Oh, you've done a, I think your analysis on that's outstanding. I think you've made, painted a very clear picture. The piece that is confusing to me is when we have a request for new officers.
Right.
But our statistics show us, looking at workloads when we have a reduced complement, how can we normalize that data?
Yeah.
So we would understand what we would have looked like when we had a full complement?
Sure.
Versus adding three more positions again? So I think you have your data on how much free time they have to, or not free time, how much time they have to do enforcement.
Right.
It's pretty clear.
Okay.
You presented that really well.
Okay, okay. But yes, I can, budget conversation.
I don't know what you want to call it.
We can work that up, we can work that up. The calls for service for full complement and then I could give it kind of a comparison. So what, what I wanted to show you, we talked about some of like the, the overall traffic enforcement pieces. And, and these were complaints that we received and we're going to kind of build on this. But kind of showing you that 10-year horizon again and there's, there's more to some of these, some of these data points as well. But I really wanted to show you kind of the, the four main complaints that we receive for, from our public, everything reckless driving, traffic hazard, traffic offense and traffic emphasis. Traffic emphasis is usually like the requests for additional officer presence maybe in a neighborhood or because someone says, you know, someone's running a stop sign at this location. And then what we'll do is, is we'll try and have some officers maybe address that over a period of time to evaluate what they see and see, take enforcement action if needed. Traffic hazard is like your, your vehicles that are broken down in the roadway or instructions in the road, trees, things like that, debris in the roadway. Traffic offense is typically someone calling in like a, kind of like a speeding vehicle or someone that's, you know, blowing stop signs, things like that. And then the reckless driving is kind of the, again, the reckless driving DUI, maybe falling too close, road rage, et cetera. So if you see, the traffic offense, what you see is we're getting, we're getting less complaints regarding like the basic speeding, stop sign, things like that, you know, per volume if you, if you look at the, the numbers there. The traffic emphasis, the, the bigger drop in 2007, 2008, that actually comes from kind of a change in the way business, this, we'll get a little bit more into this back and we look at our calls for service. We were on a trend up in calls for service increasing at a pretty rapid rate back in 2007, 2008. And when my predecessor actually joined our force, we stepped back and looked at how we were capturing data and had this conversation about are we duplicating, you know, data, are we putting the data in the right buckets? And some of those were the, some of the traffic emphasis where we were creating traffic emphasis while we were doing traffic stops. And so we were kind of duplicating some data points. We recognized that at that point in time. And so we, you saw a normalization after 2009 and on of, of how those are like based off of more the citizen complaints. Also as part of like the traffic conversation, it's giving you some data on parking complaints as well. Abandoned vehicles, impounds and parking problems. And these abandoned vehicles are typically the vehicles that are called in on like a neighborhood where there's a vehicle that's parked in their neighborhood and it's been there for a couple of days. The majority of those are turning out to be nowadays are someone in the neighborhood in front of somebody else's house and are looking at that and trying to determine whether or not it's being truly abandoned or if it's just being parked somewhere else in the neighborhood. Impounds are again, similar to that where we are looking at vehicles that might need to be towed because of their derelict vehicles, their expired tabs, things like that. Parking problems are usually addressed with like 24-hour disabled parking, blocking driveways or blocking fire lanes, those are kind of it. And as you can see, we kind of have, the impounds are just definitely reducing, some of the abandoned vehicle calls, we're getting more calls on those. Over the last three to four years, we're starting to see a little bit more of an increase. But the parking problems are relatively consistent. You see some spikes periodically here and then 2017, we're on trend to get a few more as well.
How come impound is down so severely, particularly the last couple of years?
It really depends on, some of those are, it depends on the vehicles that we, that are getting reported. So some of those, the impounds are really, they're not really impounds, they're called in as such, but they turn out to be something else, more or less the parking problem or someone's concerned about a vehicle and it just happens to be their neighbors from like three doors down. And then we're able to work together with their, the neighbors and just kind of sort that out. So we're not impounding those vehicles. So the intent of this table is to kind of show you, this is, let's say, the 100% of, of calls for service. And what I was trying to show you is, is what are traffic complaints and our parking complaints, what ratio they take up of our overall calls for service? And over this 10 years, you can kind of see from 2007 to 2016, we're seeing a reduction in those as being a overall percentage of our calls for service. Another way of looking at it, I pulled out 2008, 2016 and you see in 2008, there was 12% were traffic calls and complaints, 4% are parking, so total 16%. Then it dropped down to about 10% in 16 from 6% of traffic calls and 4% of parking calls. Again, it's just showing you that the growth rate or it's either a reduction of the call, the traffic and parking and then also the growth of our overall calls for service. It's, it's just changing a little bit. So I thought it was important to kind of show that as well. Now we're going to get into collisions. And again, this is kind of all about the traffic enforcement portions. But as you can see that we had, you can see over the 10-year period, we've had some reductions. The orange is again, non-injury collisions and the blue is the, more of the injury. If you look, the, the blue has remained relatively consistent over the past 10 years. And we saw a drop in the non-injury, we've seen an increase and now we're starting to see a drop again. 2017 is not complete, so that's why it's a pretty, a pretty decent drop right there, This is, as it correlates with the traffic citation activity, you can see our increases and then you start seeing our decreases. 2011 is kind of, we had it was stable until about 2011 and then we're starting to see a, a decline in overall traffic stops, traffic infractions. And I want to be clear too, the, the traffic infractions are more of the moving violations like the, the improper turns and the fail to stop, things like that. The non-traffic are more for like a license violations if someone has expired tabs or if someone has a equipment malfunction as well or a driver's license issue. So those are some of that. And then you see the parking as well. So you can see that, but I-
Can I ask you a question about that slide? So in 2008, 2009, it begins to drop off, but in looking at the officer counts during that time, something happened in that period where we took five officers off the street and moved them into different roles. And so we went from 24 officers on the street to 19. Did that have anything to do with the reduction in citation issuance?
No, actually, so in that timeframe, around 2010, we actually reclassified some of our officers to corporal. So they're, they're technically still in patrol, but they were re-identified from officer to corporal as part of that.
So they're still doing citation?
So they're still, they were still in patrol, they were still doing that. What we saw in 2008, 2009, what we started to see is, well, it, you can kind of see in 2007 through 2010, yes, there's some, some ups and downs in there, right? So what we saw in staffing and traffic, we had, I believe we had two in 2010 and then in 2011, 12 is when we started dropping down to one in traffic, one traffic officer. And that was more related to some of, we're starting to see some retirements, we're starting to see some injuries and we're starting to see increase of calls for service as well.
Okay, so can I follow up one?
Sure.
So for budget, when we're looking at this historical data and these citations, can we do it by the employee class? Can we look at what happened with citations when we changed? we changed classifications from patrolman to whatever, it's sergeant or whatever? Just curious to see if that had an impact, meaning that a certain class of employee was no longer issuing citations, even though technically part of their job was patrolman. I'm just curious to see if that had an impact during that period of time.
Sure, we can take a look at that.
Thanks.
Scott, the, I don't know if we're going to go over the, we have a memo in our packet?
Yes.
And so, I, I don't know if you're planning on going over this too, but the traffic enforcement data from 2007 to 2017 in the memo shows that from 2007 to 2016, I calculate traffic infractions, traffic infractions and non-traffic infractions dropped 58% and 69%. And, which I find super interesting and curious. And then I was doing a little bit of research, and I found out that this seems to be a national trend.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I wondered if you could speak to that. It, and it seems like the Seattle Times did an article in late August about the city of Seattle Police Department having the same trend. And I don't know if there's an intentional de-emphasis or de-incentive, or, I was just wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure, sure. So, yeah, we have seen a drastic reduction, but it's a combination of several things, from everything from workload, right? And that's what we're getting to coming up pretty soon, and you're talking about. We also just, I supplied you guys with a statewide proactive traffic enforcement as well. So, only nationally, but we're also seeing statewide, a decrease in the amount of infractions issued. And it's everything from agencies having staffing issues for calls for service and trying to balance it all. It is a combination of, you know, the way, again, engineering, it's kind of like we talked about earlier, what is it that creates that barrier? And it's everything from workload of responding to calls for service to the way we design roads, and it doesn't make it safe.
But early, so earlier, you said we went from two traffic, dedicated traffic enforcement officers to one. So, if you had two, or two and a half, would our numbers go back up to what they were before?
Potentially. They would have the potential. So, typically, our traffic officers, if they're left alone in, in traffic, they probably issue close to eight to 900 citations, depending upon the different issues that we're, we're running into per year. So, if you extrapolate that out, then potentially, it would have a increase in traffic citations.
Do we have any policy in the city, whether it's internal to the police department, any policy that would lead to a decrease in issuing citations?
No.
No policy at all?
No. Well, we do not have a quota. We, you know, we do not have a quota for expectations as you, you shall write so many citations. We do not have one of those.
Have we, yeah, have we had one before?
In the, historically, in the past, we had had one, and-
When was that?
That was mid-2000s, and into, around 2007 is when we had them. So, there is no quota. There's, there's some reasons why that the quota is not really necessarily supported as well. But you do see it statewide, and you do see inside the city as well, that we've seen that reduction, and also it has a lot to do with the increase of calls for service as well. So, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if, is there a reason that there would be no more quota?
More from some of like court decisions?
Thanks.
So, if we're looking at our calls for service, and we see that, we really saw that in 2008, 2009, we did reevaluate how we did business and how we evaluated our different calls for service. And by 2011, and also in 2008, 2009 is when we implemented our false alarm ordinance as well. So, we actually had a pretty good reduction in calls for service just from that alone. That was actually a good efficiency piece. But by 2011, we have kind of stabilized of any of those changes of how we do business and ensuring that the data is collected and, you know, we're not, there's no duplication, things like that. And since then, we've seen a, that continuous rise of calls for service. And that's really when, if you look at it, it's, that's when we really start seeing more of that drop, where we've, in 2008, we actually had gone up from seven, 2009, we went up, and then 2010, we started kind of that descending. Also, later, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of this workload. It's not just calls for service, but it's the expectations of how we document calls for service as well. So, a little bit later, we'll talk about crime statistics, and I'll, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well.
So, clearly, calls for service is outpacing growth of the city. So, the per capita number, calls per capita has gone up. Do we know why?
So, that's, that's this graph right here. This is, this is that comparison of population versus calls for service. And really, in 2011, they're, they're close to, I mean, if you, you know, visually, they're, they're close to staying on the same trend line, calls for service per population. Calls for service is the orange line. And as I said, it was a little bit different in 2007 to 2011, when we were kind of resetting, and we also had the, the false alarm ordinance as well, that, but since 2011, they've been on a similar trend. It looks like population is maybe outgrowing a little bit.
Oh, it, it, it looks to me like it's not outpacing it. It's the, it's on the same-
That's what I'm taking from this one as well. I guess the population was growing faster than I thought in 2011.
Right. And did we change any way that we collect information, or calculate, or put in different buckets, calls for service?
Well, besides-
Maybe that was a really badly worded question, sorry.
Yeah, because it kind of in, in, kind of like, again, going back to like the traffic emphasis calls, there was some of those that we had that were duplicating some efforts. And so, that, those are the main ones, the traffic emphasis and patrol emphasis calls that were basically capturing time when we should be, you know, proactively engaging in some sort of, you know, crime prevention or traffic prevention. So, that's the duplication that we, some of those calls that were removed. There's a couple other calls that have slowly. Also, in like the 2008, 2009 timeframe as well, we tried a citizen report form that was a, basically a quick form that someone could fill out just to get a case report to fill out for their insurance company. But what we found there is, is we were not capturing data, we were not capturing our criminal statistics that we needed. So, if someone had a package theft, it was just basically reported so they could get a case number. But what that does is, then it doesn't feed into our overall crime statistics. So, that was, that was a piece where we made a cognizant effort to say, you know, we need to capture it, because we need to be able to say what is actually occurring. And we didn't want to just give a case number just to, you know, fulfill that need. We wanted to be able to, you know, track our crime data. So, we had a little bit of that, where they were creating calls, and then it's, it was a convenience, but it really wasn't capturing criminal data correctly. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure.
This is, this is another piece of this too, of like the sworn officers per thousand. Now, this is, you know, just one piece of looking at, the, the blue line is the total sworn, so that includes the chief to, you know, through all, all the officers as well. And the orange line is really to try and dedicate the patrol per thousand, and that's the, the uniforms that you typically see on the street. Because in addition to the patrol uniforms, you're also seeing, we also have our investigative units as well who do a lot of the follow-up. And so, that's ranged over the years as well, depending upon staffing needs, where we've had, you know, three or four detectives and a supervisor in there to follow up on crimes. We also have a school resource officer that's included in part of the overall sworn staff. We have community resource officer as well. So, those are all included in this. So, when you look at the overall, total sworn per thousand, some are, and then you have the administrators who, you know, sit behind their desks and, you know, work on policies and procedures.
So, the sworn is the total complement, whether they're filled or not filled?
Yes. So, like if you were, the sworn would be, for example, we have 37 authorized So, going back to, in addition to, you know, calls for service on the rise, you see that the traffic citations are, you know, the traffic enforcement has been reducing, you know, as well, trying to, this is a capacity issue. And as, another piece of this is, is our crime clearance rate. And we're going to talk a little bit more about criminal statistics here in a little bit, but as part of this, what we've seen in the last few years is a decline in the cases that we're solving. And, and what that impact is, is maybe a few less people are being held accountable for their actions, and/or were not recovering as much property, and hopefully making somebody whole again. But those are, that's, that's another piece of this, that's on, that's on the backend of this as well. As crime rates, you know, increase and we're unable to clear them, that's, that's, that's another indicator of our ability to address all of those. And it's, and that's from a few different things, from different types of crimes that, that we're seeing as well. Some are a lot of more computer-based, and so we're having to do a lot more, I guess, online, addressing online crimes as well. So, that's, again, this is, this is part of this. And also, we've seen some increases in some of our petty theft that we're unable to address as well.
So, I just, I don't understand this slide.
Sure.
So, what is 21.4 in 2016? What does that mean?
21.4% of our cases are solved. So, 2013, we're solving about 30% of our crimes, and now, in 2016, we're down to 21%.
So, the questions, same question that's been asked a few times, does this account for the fact that we've been down in staffing?
It's a combination of-
Or does this statistic reflect that?
That does. That reflects the capacity issue of whether or not we have enough to respond to calls for service on the street and do, do everything that's required.
But if we were fully staffed, would that 21.4 be higher and not look, I'm asking, is this sort of an artificial low because we are down in staff?
It is a combination of a couple of things. It is a combination of the ability to solve certain crimes, but it is also ability to how far we can pursue crimes. So, 20 years ago, we maybe had a little more time to follow every lead and follow every little possible piece of the crime to be able to solve it. And so, now, we're having to triage all of our cases, just like, you know, on, when we have an emergency call for service, we have to figure out which ones we go to first. And as our, the follow-up investigations keep, continue to increase, we're going to have to continue to triage those and figure out which ones we need to follow. So, obviously, like a person crimes would be the higher, you know, priority ones, and then you start getting into theft and fraud, and you're working through those. And those have a little bit more detailed follow-up, and be able to follow those into other states as well. It's not as easy to do that as, anymore.
And how does this compare to other jurisdictions both here, both here and nationally?
There, other jurisdictions, they're seeing a decline in some of this as well.
So, a question on that. Would it be possible for you to provide us this by type of crime? I know we had a resident here who forwarded us a report recently about, I don't know if it's a federal report, I don't know where it came from, but it had all the different classifications of crime. I think what would be really important for me to see is, are we actually still having a similar crime clearance rate on our more serious crimes? And maybe it is the new age web-based things that we are not as effective at. But I think I'd be really concerned if what I found it is, is that it was sexual assaults and rapes and the other ones where we are actually falling kind of-
I can tell you that our priority is like the person crimes, crimes involving people.
Oh, yeah.
So, those are, those are, I would say that those are not the ones that you're seeing that are, those are not the ones that are declining.
Thank you. That's very reassuring. Could you also, in the graphic, give us a graphic by crime type, so that we can actually see the crime clearance rate on different crimes?
We can work on that. Not sure if I'll have that for the first budget presentation.
Oh, that's okay. Just consider it a question.
Yeah.
Budget question. That's great.
Can we go back?
You bet.
I just, just to follow up on that a little bit, in 2013 and 2014, was the department fully staffed at that time?
No. Over the past few years, we've been usually averaging about, as I said, last three and a half years, about three to four people in kind of transition, either in the process of being hired or injured, or-
Okay.
Or vacancies.
Thank you. And then, just to follow up a little bit on what Mary Lou was asking, in terms of just, when you're talking about crimes in general, is that definition standard through, from 13 to 16?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's based off of-
Definition stayed the same?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the, the definition of some of our, how we attract crimes changed in 2011.
Okay.
Yeah. What's the influence of the detectives on this?
Influence of the detectives?
Yeah. I mean, because detectives clear crime, that search out.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. That's, well, it starts from the, it starts from the initial point of contact, right? So, the first point of an officer showing up at a call for service, being able to collect the initial data, having the time to make sure that they do a thorough, like on-scene investigation, connect with the victims, and make sure that they get the most information to set us up for success at the beginning. So, that's a big piece of that too, is, one of the conversations we talk about is quality over quantity when it comes to addressing a victim's needs, is you have to have that extra time to connect with that victim to make sure, because first of all, you have to spend time to reassure them that they're safe, right? If there's an issue, you have to spend that time and get them to that point. After you've had a chance to address that, then you start getting into like the basics of what the criminal elements are, what the elements of the crime. So, it is part of detective, but it also, it's how we start. And if we have a less quality amount of time to interact with that victim at the front end, it creates more difficulties on the backend for solving the crime. So, talk a little bit more about the, the crime reporting. And 2011 is where I mentioned is when we kind of started changing some of that, that data collection. Up until 2011, our state reporting, and, and inside your packet as well, you have past history of several of our, our NiBARS reports, our, our state reporting that we report every year, annual reports of crime. Up until 2011, we utilized UCR, which is Unified Crime Report, and that's like the, the national reporting system. Big difference, and then in 2011, we changed the National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NiBARS. And that was implemented in 2011. The biggest difference between the two of them was, UCR really focused on like the, the most significant crime. So, for example, if you had a burglary where someone was assaulted in it, the person crime, you know, would like maybe be the one that would be captured, depending upon the significance of the injury to the person that was assaulted in the commission of the burglary, that would be the major one that was captured. In preparation for this, we actually started in around 2008, transitioning our individual, our officers for capturing the data for this transition, because we were anticipating in 2010, it got pushed one year to 2011, because of different agencies getting prepared for it. In preparation for that, that's when we started spending more time with this. So, to be able to capture all that data now, the officers are responsible for capturing all parts of those different crimes. So, they're spending a little more time entering data for each case report. So, it's not just the time that we spend on scene with like the victim and collecting it, but then we have to go back and write the reports. And we have to make sure that we capture the, the data and identify it and put it in the correct buckets for all the different crimes. So, whereas in 2000, prior to 2011, it might take, it was, it was in the system, and it might only take a few minutes. Now, some of these take an additional 20 to 30 minutes, just to make sure that all the data is put in correctly for each crime. So, that has an impact on some of the, the workload as well.
So, a question, so this, NiBARS is national.
Yes.
And so, it's sort of a changing in police enforcement across the country. It's kind of a shame to have a highly-trained professional shift from being, doing the investigative work and the on-the-beat work to doing report entry. Is there any really innovational ideas out there where police forces have found a way to have a non-professional police officer's supportive service for this, so we can have more hours on the street and less hours on computers?
Yes. So, a lot of agencies have tried to address this issue through various methods from, you know, it's, I guess the question is, yes, where does the workload, who does it lie with, right? And that's what's, I'm reframing it, I guess, is, that's what you just asked. Some agencies utilize their officers, some then hire additional, let's say, records support staff as well. But there's some inefficiencies doing it either way. So, some agencies do everything from the officer does an initial, maybe takes a very brief report, and then pushes it to a detective to do the majority of the follow-up, or they do the basics, and then they push it off to the records management to do a lot of follow-up. There's some inefficiencies with that, because then the records people have to read every single report, and they have to pretty much retrace the steps of what the officer does. So, we've added some efficiencies within our own system to continue to kind of try and streamline that as much. Last, within the last year, we implemented a, a new module to our records management system that has increased that speed a little bit. has increased that speed a little bit. We don't have the, I don't have the numbers in front of you right now, but that's one of those efficiency pieces. But where the workload lies is, that is an option, but we would need to add...
What would be fascinating to see at budget time is if you actually have the data that now we have. We used to write reports in 33.3 minutes on average, but with this improvement that costs X dollars, we've got it down to 22, and we have more time on the street, that data would be interesting.
See if I can get that data, because I don't know if I can.
It seems like there are two, there are two interesting things to note about NiBRS. One is, it results in more crime reporting.
Mm-hmm.
And then two, workload.
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
And then, I read something also about static versus not static, something about crimes being able to be...
So we'll look at the last 10 years of some of these crime statistics. Part-one crimes, UCR used to call part-one crimes where kind of like the main crimes towards people is what they would kind of identify it towards in the green. And if you look at them historically, you can kind of see some numbers, but some of the bigger points that I kind of want to point out is in 2014 is when we saw a big jump in our theft. That is really when a lot of the commercial came online up in the Highlands, and we saw a big increase there. That was also around the timeframe of some of the privatization of liquor as well, but we saw that, that's when we saw kind of a big jump is when that, the additional square footage was, came online in the Highlands. That was in 2014. Now, you see some variances and some of, like, the ones that really stand out, and we'll talk about the changes from 2015 to 2016. I know I had a chance to kind of talk to a couple of you about some of those. And, you know, specifically, we'll talk about the ones that have, like, the big jumps, rape, aggravated assault, and robbery. So rape category includes date rape, domestic violence rape, child rape as well. And we had those. And so these are not stranger-type crimes. So like, the offender or the person that's, you know, caused the crime to the victim, there's known relationships in all of these, so this is not a, like, a stranger-type situation. It's unfortunate that, you know, in 2016, yes, we did have an increase, and they are associated with domestic violence and some child rape as well. The aggravated assault, that includes assault on an officer, domestic violence assault, assault with a weapon, serious injuries sustained such as, like, broken bones, choking, et cetera. So in 2016, you saw an increase. We actually had two of those include two assaults on our own police officers in 2016. And then several of them were domestic violence assaults, there was a juvenile fight, there was a customer versus employee incident at a drive-through window that created a, that included one of these. We did have an incident at a local establishment where two individuals got in an argument over a pool game. And we also had one, this was also, like, a DUI collision went into a house, causing an injury within the house as well. So, again, these are, you know, we did have an increase on some of those, but there was a, the majority of those were domestic violence-related. Yes.
So Scott, under the theft one, you talked about most of these part-one crimes being ones that are inflicted on individuals. So does the theft number include something like a grocery store theft, including, as well as, like, a package theft?
Yes.
Or a snatch? Would it be possible to break that out a little bit? So, because to me, somebody running out of a grocery store with a case of beer might be a little bit different than somebody riding around neighborhoods and snatching packages off of things.
Correct.
So is there a way to change it from an actual theft from somebody in the community to a theft from a big box store or grocery store?
We can, we can take a look at that. And I will say that we have seen, like, a big contributor, and this is, I guess, this is an ask of our community that hopefully is watching tonight, a big contributor to some of our thefts, and specifically, like, our vehicle prowls, and that falls under this as well, is, you know, we have close to 70% of our vehicle prowls are associated with, you know, unintended items and unlocked vehicles. And so just removing items from the vehicle can help reduce that number. So that's our ask tonight of the community, is that be one. We've seen that, and we've kind of started digging into that, but we can, we can take a look at kind of how that is broken out. But yes, everything from a package theft to a vehicle prowl to a shoplift, those all are encompassed within that category.
So just a follow-up question. What I've heard from some residents is that it seems anecdotally that the number of package thefts or car prowls themselves have gone up.
Sure.
Just because, I don't know why, the economy, whatever. I've also heard that, or been asked, is it because they don't, you know, that we're now known as a city that you can come through and drive down streets and park and go through cars and pick up, you know, whatever the Amazon packages?
Sure. So if you, I'm going to go back, like, over the past 10 years, and if you look at some of, like, you know, you look at some of our numbers, you know, you see there's the rise and fall of theft, vehicle theft, same thing, and burglary as well. And we do see the rise and fall of that, and that can be contributed to several different factors, from everything of how crimes are classified in the state, how the King County prosecutor determines what their charging decisions are, whether or not something is going to be charged as a felony or misdemeanor. And then also, there's like, some of, like, there's been some initiatives that have addressed maybe repeat offenders for vehicle theft, burglary theft as well. And those have changed over the years as well. So some of those have changed. In conversations with some of, like, our, looking at some of our data from our east side, other east side cities, they see similar rises and falls, and we see similar ones, like the burglaries, for example. We do see the rise and falls of those as well. I'm glad you say about the anecdotally, about the package thefts. This data that we present to you is only as good as what we receive from reports. And so there are times where we have run into where there's been the conversations from, let's say, a particular neighborhood where they come and approach us and say, "We've been, we've been getting 30 package thefts in the last week." And we go look at our reports, and we've only received two or three reports. So what is getting, you know, talked about in the neighborhoods, what's actually getting reported to us is different. How we apply our resources, we can't apply our resources to a location where we don't officially know where things are happening, so that's a piece of it, too. We need, you know, this information reported to us. So when you do hear the anecdotal where somebody does do that, it does, it stirs up that conversation where they hear about it, and then they hear about it from another neighbor. But when we look at our, specifically, from a neighborhood, if someone asks those questions, and our numbers don't necessarily match with what they're talking about in, you know, in their circles, and so we need that to be reported to us so we can look at it, because we can't address those issues if they come up unless they don't report them.
So are you concerned that while we say we have 928 thefts, that that could be a significant underreporting?
It could be. And any, you know, some of these, you know, thefts are those, you know, vehicle prowls are some of those that get underreported, package thefts get underreported at times as well. Actually, I don't, I can't confirm whether or not they have, I can hear anecdotally that you hear it, but we do see that. But if you do look at our thefts from '14, '15, and '16, those are relatively stable. I mean, the big change was, is we had, like, the, kind of like, the large growth in that point in time. But we do see some of those where they are unreported, and it's hard to, you know, apply the resources to the right space if they don't get reported.
Scott?
Yes.
So these are actual numbers that we're looking at here, so, I mean, and they're, my question is, is where population is increasing tremendously? And so how do we, with this, as actual numbers versus a percentage of the crimes, can you help me out with?
Yes. I don't know if I have it in front of me, but as part of the crime statistics that report, and I didn't capture it in one of the graphics here, but it should be in your packet, and if you look at our annual reports, you can kind of look at the rate of crimes per thousand, and those will show up in those annual reports. So, and I apologize, I don't have a graphic showing that, but there, you know, there are some variances of the crimes per thousand, so if you have per capita. So that is captured in the packet, and I apologize for not having that in front of me right now.
Okay, this is the same data with a few more rows.
Yes. This is overlaying the, this is really what the NiBRS, in 2011, we switched from UCR to NiBRS. It captures a lot more, it captures some different crimes, and I tried to highlight, again, the green is the part run from the UCR data, just to kind of continue to address that. But these are different, these are additional crimes that are captured as part of, like, the NiBRS. I kind of want to draw your attention to is, you know, you talk about the workload, and some of these, some of these are based on what's reported to us, and then there's some that are located because of proactive patrols, meaning that the officers have the ability to go out and locate somebody. And those, I would say, more towards the drugs, narcotics, and the drugs and equipments. As, you know, our availability to respond to calls or as more calls increase, our ability to go out and look for people who maybe are being involved in drugs and activities, that reduces. And also, we have the legalization of marijuana that had a little bit of an impact on that as well. So with legalization of marijuana, there's going to be less, obviously, crimes associated with that. You see a increase in the destruction of property, but as part of that, capturing some of, like, the vehicle prowls and the theft issues is, when someone, you know, again, capturing multiple crimes, if someone breaks a window getting into a car, you know, some of those, it captures the destruction of property and the theft. So we've seen a little bit of that as well.
So thank you for providing this, and the UCR categories highlighted. It is interesting, the especially aggravated assaults, you look at that historically, and you can, you were pretty hopeful that that trend from 11 all the way down through 2015 was going to continue, which was pretty good. So unfortunately, we've had that bump up. Then, but, and you've already addressed this, Scott, but if I was, if I was a resident and I'm looking at this data, and I, and I look at the raw numbers, and maybe I don't know what to make of them in terms of those high or low, should I be concerned specifically about some of those, specifically, let's say, the one, those last, the rape and aggravated assault? What would you, what would you tell the citizens about? How should they be concerned? Is something different? Is there some trend? Is there something out of control? What would, what would you tell them about those numbers in particular, those categories that have really, even though historically and absolute values, just from a purely data perspective?
Right.
It's not crazy.
So purely data...
But those are year-over-year, those are concerning.
Purely data, yes, some of those increases are concerning. Purely just numbers, right?
Yeah.
But I will say this, Issaquah is a very safe community. And what we tried to look at, again, I mentioned earlier about the victim-to-offender relationship, and looking at the, whether or not the victim knows who the offender is. And if you really look at our crimes, that is a very, very low number, and I apologize again, I didn't provide that slide, but if you look in some of our annual reports, usually the second page for each year has that, has some of that data on there as well. And we do have a very low number, and so where you're going to have the unknowns would be maybe, you know, we've had some bank robberies, I didn't get a chance to talk about that, about that increase as well. But in 2015 to '16, if you look at our robberies, yes, we had nine and then 12, but we had, there was a, there had, if you recall, there was a series of bank robberies that were associated in our downtown, and that carried over into the beginning of '16 as well. That individual ended up getting arrested down in Auburn. We had partnered with several resources around the area, and we ended up putting together a case on the individual, and that cleared out a bunch of those cases. So sometimes, yes, there might be some of those, and that would be in the victim-offender relationship, and that is unknown, because that, you know, is a bank robbery situation. But a lot of these, some of these other robberies that we had, for example, in 2016, we had a handful of illicit drug transactions that went awry. Basically, some people, somebody was selling drugs to another individual that they knew, and it didn't turn out well. So it turned into a robbery where they took something from, they took their money and they took off. So again, that's not necessarily an unknown, but it does create an element of, you know, of danger for those individuals, but they are more of, it's a known situation. You know, some of our robberies also is, you know, as you've kind of referred to, a shoplift, but it elevates because they utilize some sort of force to, you know, try and get away as well. So it escalates it to a different type of crime, a shoplift, because you, you know, brandish a knife when you're trying to get away, that then escalates it to a robbery. But bottom line is, is we do have a very safe community, and our incidence of some of these part-ones, or the, you know, the highlighted in green, yes, they do vary from year to year, but there's always a story behind each crime, and that's, and it's hard to necessarily always tell that story just through sheer data, because you can look at percentages on some of those, and it is, it is difficult. But then some of them, like the rapes, you know, we, we're, those are, sad to say, some known offenders on those. So those are either domestic violence or some sort of, like, a child rape of a child type situation. So overall, it is a very safe community. That kind of answered your question?
Well, I, we can say that, I can say that, you know, is there a rising criminal element if we look at something like the rape? Again, if you have to look at it historically, and I do, but if you just, if you look at year-over-year, if someone's concerned about, just there's a criminal element that's growing.
Right. Well, and going back to Councilmember Barber's question earlier about that, the crime per capita as well, and looking at that, we can, that is a piece that we can take a look at of, as with growth, we're going to have, you know, increased incidents that we have to investigate, so we'll...
Two questions, unfortunately, around that rape number. The first is preliminary 2017, the numbers thus far this year, is it looking more along historical lines, or does it continue to be significantly elevated from historical?
I don't have that right now, because I'm really, I was basing this off of what we report, because some of ours that maybe what they're reported now might be closed out differently by the time, by the end of the year. So there are times when we maybe have initiated an investigation, but it's maybe not closed out, so it might be closed out of something else, depending upon what the conclusion of the investigation is.
So the second part of the question is, it would be interesting to look at some of these ones where we're seeing an increase over time, or it's historically very high, so around burglary, around rape, around aggravated assault. It'd be interesting to get sort of IPD's, I don't want to say lessons learned, but for instance, if some of this is, you know, child rape, or, you know, minors and adults or whatever, to, advice for parents or people in the community to help put some context on it, to say across these things, here are some of the things that you'd be particularly smart to avoid. So if it's, you know, adults who are grooming minors or something like that, you know, provide some of that feedback to the community to let people say, "What can I do to make sure that whatever's going on in my community, I can help reduce the risk to my family and in my neighborhood?"
Mm-hmm. That's actually a really good conversation, and we are trying to leverage, like, when we have some of our neighborhood conversations, if some of our community members do have those conversations, we try and leverage our community resource officer when our time that we do spend with them to address some of those on more of a smaller basis. Talking about a, more of a community-wide conversation, you know, we can, we can take a look at that, and, you know, some of those are, you know, they're, you know, they're, it's not just our community, it's, you know, it's a nationwide problem with some of these issues.
Well, that's exactly, like, if there is an increase in, you know, you hear about trafficking and all that, and you hear about, you know, him's grooming high schoolers and all that kind of stuff. If in fact, that is a national trend, and if unfortunately, we're seeing it also play out in Issaquah, the way we've had a real honest conversation about opioids, if there's other honest conversations we need to have so that we can feel like we're protecting our families better? I think that would be really helpful to hear the IPD's thoughts on that.
Yeah, and we've also had some of those conversations utilized in our school resource officers as well, within the school district and in some of the schools, to talk about some of those dangers, about, you know, some of your online presence and some of the, you know, social media aspects, and then how that could be utilized for those, those exact things you're talking about.
So I just want to totally plus-one what Tola said. I think sitting here and listening and looking at... I think, sitting here and listening and looking at the numbers, a couple of thoughts. One is, our community is safe, but a community is safer when it's both the community and police both acting together to do things. And so some of the things that Tola brought up about how can the community themselves be better informed, so that they are aware not only of what our trends are, but what we can do as a community, not just a police force, to address it. I actually believe that this data should be highly transparent, and it should be on our website, and it should be reported out with some sort of context that goes with it, similar to what you're presenting tonight, so that we can address the concerns of parents who have come to speak to us that maybe don't have a high schooler, or don't attend one of your community meetings, so that we can heighten the awareness of this. Anyway, I had a couple other thoughts, but I think I'll save them for the end. But Tola, that's exactly how we make the community a better place, so thanks for bringing that up. Really good. Oh, I know what it was, Scott.
Sure.
I know we're talking about data, but I have worked with your officers before, and I know that there may be people watching tonight who happen to be in one of those categories. And even though our numbers may be what they are, you guys see it all the time. It is terrible.
Yes, it is.
So any family that has been caught up, or individual in any of these, I want to make sure that we're not just considering these numbers that are slightly going up or slightly going down. These are people.
And that's part of the reason why I'm not necessarily going into some of the details on those, because I definitely respect our victims, and I want to honor those investigations, because it's not just the individual, but it's also their families, and their friends, and their circles, and it has an impact, any one of these incidents, you know, and that's, that's the hard part about data, right? It doesn't tell that story. It doesn't tell the story of the impacts of the family. And let alone, I mean, anytime that our officers respond to one of these types of calls, they're heartbroken, right?
They are.
Because, you know, I have kids, you know, as well. You know, we all have family, right? We are all impacted by these type of things, and when one of these incidents happens, it impacts you to your core. So I appreciate that. I really do appreciate that comment.
Thank you.
So you're kind of talking about work plan, you're talking about, okay, what's the next steps? How do we do this? And you guys have talked a little bit about, you know, kind of that data, that transparency and telling that story. You know, we're going to be talking about budget, some of that piece, but one of the things that we're also working on right now is, even if we are allowed to increase staffing, there's going to be this time delay. We've talked about how long it takes to, you know, hire, once we're authorized, staff to get them up and running. So we're working on partnering with some of our local agencies to maybe help us with some patrol, some emphasis patrols, you know, around traffic enforcement as well. So that could be coming online here, hopefully, within the next couple of months, but that's more of like a temporary basis, kind of just to address a couple of issues. How this all started was the conversation about automated, you know, traffic camera systems, and we can reevaluate those. And again, we want to continue to reevaluate those, because, you know, we talked about them last year with the school zone cameras, and then, you know, evaluating how those projects were, and what we could do, and, you know, and reevaluate just the conversation about the red light camera, so I'm bringing it full circle on this. We can take a look at that as well, and say, okay, at some point, does it make more sense? Can we, you know, and how we look at it, how we can implement those? So with the, obviously, that's, we can reevaluate that as well. You know, we're looking at realigning our resources again. We're going to be tapping people to do certain pieces of work that we're doing. We're looking at our community resource officers, and how we can best leverage them to, you know, increase our efficiency, and kind of increase our capacity as well. The other pieces, so recently, we're adding some modules to our records management system. You're talking about, the bottom one is the community dashboard. You're talking about that transparency piece on data, and this is one of the ones that we're actually, we're in the process of hopefully getting up and running by the end of the year. And that would kind of give like a past couple-year snapshot of all the crimes and activities as well, within kind of neighborhoods, so we're hoping to get that up and running by the end of the year. Implement, we're working towards implementation of the online reporting, but this one's going to be more of a in-depth, where the person reporting has to fill in the correct data, so we can make sure that we're capturing our crime statistics properly. And then the CompStat module, and really what that is, is that's more of the internal, it's similar to the community dashboard, but it's more of an internal of looking at applying resources to address different crime issues, things like that, within our community, based on times, you know, like a month or a year, and really kind of just reapply our resources more efficiently. So those are some of the things that you're going to be, we're working towards by the end of this year, to help kind of, again, just create some of those more efficiencies, and hit on some of those pieces you guys are, have brought up tonight. Yes?
So just some comments.
You bet.
So excited that you talked about the community dashboard, and by the end of the year, that is fantastic. I really like Seattle's online reporting system that they have for offenses like package theft, because if you're talking about underreporting, if that is a software system that we might want to entertain, I'd be interested in knowing during budget session, what that costs exactly, because, you know, goes to the accuracy of our data. Like I mentioned earlier, when we're doing the, looking at this at budget time, I'd kind of like to factor in the impact that the vacancies of the unfilled positions over the last three to four years have had, in particular, since it runs as high as three to four people. There was that report that you attached, the state report, I just love that report. I just can't tell you enough good things about it. I thought it was awesome. One section, it talked about the differences between police forces that have traffic dedicated officers versus patrol-only officers, and what the expectation challenge can be in terms of ticket issuance. I wondered if you could tell us, I think I asked for it earlier, citations per the traffic officer when they were performing, when they were in that slot, versus the patrol officers. In particular, on page 32 and 31, there was a mention in the state report of the use of more photo enforcement to supplement officer traffic enforcement. And I know when we talked about speed enforcement, it was restricted to speed cameras, could only be at schools. I wasn't sure what they're getting out there, and I'd like you to talk more about that at some future date, to let us know if that is a technology that we can use to supplement more. Okay.
State law.
The other one was, they did talk a lot about engineering solutions for traffic enforcement, and I mention that because I'm going to come back to some strategy suggestion after. There was something in the report that talked about setting ticket prices. Does IPD set its own violations or using a schedule?
No, we utilize the state schedule for that.
Great.
There is one piece to that, though, that if we utilize, there's a couple of, Issaquah municipal codes that we utilize for some, and that's a little bit different. And then we haven't adopted our own parking citations.
Okay, and I was just going to say, I'm having a total blank on parking citations, and whether or not that's something that was in the mayor's proposed budget or not, but it's definitely something that'll come forward if that's an IPD issue, just something to put on your, to think about. In the back of that Washington state report, they had fantastic sample strategy action plans, which actually goes exactly to what Tola was talking about. It's not just reporting the numbers and seeing the rise, it's what are you going to do when you see it? I loved it. I thought those looked like extremely useful tools, that we could actually post, complete and post, and let our public know, yes, we see the numbers are rising too, and yes, we can, we have a strategy, or there's a reason why, you know, we had a bump, and we get it, but we don't need to put a specific strategy in place. But for me, the things in the community that I'm hearing about is the proliferation of red light running, speeding at certain times during the day, blocked intersections, stolen packages. And then one question I thought that I asked, but maybe I didn't, was, we were going to get a report back on truck route violations, since we instituted the no-truck traffic? I still kind of would like to see that. And a question for you about, the mayor's proposed budget proposes three new policing positions, and that, just, this is a pre-budget ask. I kind of would like to see a scenario from you that is similar to what the Eastside Fire and Rescue does, which is, without increasing positions, they deal with the difficulty of the long training and intake process to pre-hire, meaning they are allowed to supplement their budget with additional funds to hire expected replacements, so that they're in training before the actual firefighters are coming offline. So they're covering that six-to-nine-month-to-maybe-year-long gap with funding instead of new positions, and I kind of like to see what that looks like during budget process, in particular, since we've had three to four vacancies for a while. And I think that's it. Oh, sorry, you did mention about record support staff, potentially, with pros and cons, being a way to mitigate some of the increased reporting requirements from NiBRS, and I kind of like to hear more about what that might look like in terms of dollars and cents when we get to budget. This was a great presentation, Scott. Very thorough, and it was great. Thank you.
Yeah, plus one to that. The budget ask I have would be, and those are all really good questions, but I'm curious about specifically what the ask for three additional positions, what we are trying to accomplish, and then specifically, and then also specifically, how that would impact our traffic enforcement numbers.
So you're looking for outcomes, or intended outcomes?
Outcomes, and what we need to do to do more traffic enforcement.
I just wanted to say, I just wanted to plus one to what Stacy was talking about in terms of, when we're going into budgeting, more information about how those roles would be defined would be really helpful.
And how the application of those three FTEs would be used?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else?
And then a quickie, just, if you did that, would that change any of our set standards, such as three officers on patrol at once, you know, those kinds of things that are set that you have to cover? Add more positions with many changes to those?
Okay.
I do have a question, yeah?
You bet.
The, maybe we'll, let's talk maybe more of this at the budget time, if you don't have it right now, but the, there's a whole region, you talked about our inability, we have vacancies, but I know we're not alone.
Right.
And what is that? Is that just, is that just because the demand for officers is beyond the available supply? What else might we be able to do, not only to get the proper resources, but is there some strategy that we, in terms of employment plan, headcount plan, to, that takes into account this larger factor, that there just simply may not be enough available? If we're always going to have certain vacancies, and therefore, we're always understaffed, and I know, really, you said there are things in transition, that could be, they're getting training, or there are injuries, or something like else, but we're always going to be chronically understaffed because of just not enough qualified individuals? That's the conversation. Is there something else that we can and should maybe be doing to overcome that?
I can answer, because I think, there's a couple of questions you guys have kind of asked about that. I can, if you want to save it, I can, or I can kind of answer a little bit to that. So it's up to you guys. Go through the questions, I guess, first. Any other? Tola? Lane? All right, he's got another one.
Another question. Are there times where you have considered, in terms of hiring, if you're waiting for people to go through that 12-month period, supplementing with non-officers in, to help on the record-keeping side, some of what we've talked about, on a temporary basis, until those positions are filled? I'm just wondering if that's ever been a practice that you've looked at?
We have not. But the, we're looking at where we put the workload. That's one of those pieces we're trying to figure out, where does that workload lie? So that's, I mean, the way you just phrased it, but no, we have not done temporary, because then we're talking about, one of the issues we run into is bargaining units, of moving work in and out of bargaining units, and that's part of that conversation as well.
I just didn't know if there was a way to offset what we were talking about in terms of some of that record-keeping and reporting, although I know that that can be a double-edged sword, and sometimes duplicate work. So just wondering if that had been considered?
Excellent. Excellent question. Okay. Got some homework.
Okay. Scott, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next item is the first item. Issaquah Hobart Road traffic volume statistics. I typically allow public comment, and I didn't do that. So, do we have anybody here who wants to provide any brief comments? Mary?
I just want to thank you for the, all the information that you shared in the report and all the work done, and I know it's hard work, but I would like to just bring up, and hopefully, in this year's budget, and you look at Vision Zero, and look at what other cities are doing to put together a task force, because a lot of changing of behavior can be done by citizens, and citizens working in tandem with the police, with the school systems. And if you have a concentrated effort, where you clearly say, as a city, we're going to make our safe, cities safer traffic-wise, you can have more traffic guards, you can have people out there at the end of school helping direct traffic. There's a lot of things you can do, but you need to have a concentrated goal and policy that you're going to really try and change behavior and save lives. And without that, because I just don't see even the department staffs working together, I don't see, the rock and roll plan is on the shelf, we don't really review projects, public work projects for safety, or get public input on that. Second Avenue stoplight is just horrendous, the way it's been designed without public input, and I, as a police, or if I were a fire department and have to use that and pull out there, I think it's atrocious. And I think if we'd had more public comments and inputs and reviews of some of these things, and working together, we'd have a much better, safer city, and we'd start changing behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Scott, for coming back up. Okay, now moving on to the Issaquah-Hobart Road traffic volume statistics, and just to let all council members know that the reason this is, so these statistics were presented as part of sort of an update of the status of the Issaquah-Hobart Road traffic study that the city partnered with King County on, and the gathering of information included these statistics, and the council's infrastructure committee had a briefing, I think it's the last meeting, about that, where we are on that study, and leadership asked for this part of that presentation to come to the full council, because we thought that the information was important to share, not only with the entire council, but to be also shared with the public, you know. Was, infrastructure is obviously on camera, this one is too, so we get a double discussion of it.
Thank you. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. I appreciate the council's patience in having me go second, because at the last minute, I had to make some adjustments to the presentation that was put in your packet, so I added a couple of slides, which may help further have the council, further understand the data and what it's saying that's occurring in the corridor of the Issaquah-Hobart Road and Front Street. The project itself, the study itself, was authorized by the city council, as well as a partnership with King County, authorized by the city council back in fall of last year. The two agencies, the staff worked together technically to develop scope of work, and worked with Transport Group, following that consultant selection process, to flesh out the detail of the scope of services, and the scope of services was very data-intensive. It was primarily an exercise of collecting a lot of data, dealing with the traffic, the accidents, and things of that sort, as well as then taking that information and synthesizing it into a toolbox of potential solutions, at least to this point right now. it into a toolbox of potential solutions, at least to this point right now. And so what this presentation is going to do is it's going to basically inform the council of the data that was collected, and then I'll explain what the next steps are, what the consultants are going to be doing, and what the council can expect over the next couple of months. First off, the traffic volumes. As part of the study, the consultant did traffic counts along Front Street, from Gilman Boulevard, south to Highway 18, and as you can see here, the average daily total traffic between Gilman Boulevard and Sunset Way, that's north of Sunset, the way the consultant classified it, the average daily traffic or ADT is between nine, 9,000 and 17,600 cars per day, and that's both directions, that's not one direction. Between Sunset Way and Cedar Grove Road, the traffic volumes ADT are between 18,900 and 20,400 vehicles, and then south of Cedar Grove Road, the ADT is 10,900 to 15,000 vehicles per day. These are averages over the time period by which they took the sample, which is typically about a one-week time period. They'll put the traffic counts out and count the cars, which is standard of industry. What the graph shows is the distribution of those trips during the day. For instance, the northbound is the dark blue line, and so in the morning, what you find is at Front Street, south of Sunset Way, the traffic heading north through the city of Issaquah peaks around 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and then it tapers off throughout the day, the rest of the time. Conversely, the PM peak typically peaks somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., and then drops off again. So it's climbing and then stays at a pretty decent level throughout the day, and then peaks, you know, again between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. The peak hour volumes along Front Street in this section are less than 500 cars in that given hour. And so, to put that in perspective, a free-flowing, one-lane of traffic should be able to handle about 1,200 cars, but here, the congestion and the different movements and conflict points and everything tend to slow people down, and so you get less cars through at, in the peak hour.
I have a question, Sheldon. Is, am I just deceiving me, or does it look like there's less total traffic southbound than there is northbound? Is there any evidence that some people take a different route home in the afternoon than they, that somehow don't take the same route home that they took in, southbound, that they took in northbound in the morning?
There was a little bit of anecdotal evidence on that from the consultant. I wouldn't say it's substantial, though. I have another slide that'll show you a little bit more about the percent distributions in both the north and southbound directions, so hopefully that'll clear things up a little bit more.
Go back to that slide for a sec. So the, the column on the left is just like 500 vehicles per hour?
What that is, is it is the number of vehicles, but if you correlate it to the peak hour, so for instance, you, it's, it is basically what the graph is showing, is at the time of the measurement, and I believe they summed it up by half-hour or hour increments to create the data points.
Okay, so I heard, oh, sorry, Sheldon, sorry.
So it is per hour.
Okay, so I know Sumamish is also looking at their traffic right now, and they're talking about using an AAW DT instead of an AADT, so it takes out the Saturday and Sunday traffic, and it really just uses the five days of commuter traffic?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that we are able to pull out of this information? Because obviously on Saturday and Sunday, the traffic volumes are going to be so much lower that they actually might deaden or dampen some of what we see?
We should be able to pull that data out.
Awesome. Thanks.
So, traffic distribution, as I mentioned, Mr. Martz, if you look at the left-hand graphic in there, that is the northbound AM volumes in a percentage description. So for instance, if you're coming from Highway 18, heading northbound, what that is telling the viewer is that by the time the traffic reaches May Valley Road, approximately 16% of the traffic has already made turns off of the road. As you head up into Issaquah, you'll see a 14% and a 17% number on the right and left, respectively, and those are basically Sunset Way and Newport Way. So at some point where those roads meet Front Street, roughly 31% of the traffic has made a turn off of Front Street. The remaining 53% travels north to I-90, and either goes on I-90, or it moves north along East Lake-Sumamish Parkway to destinations basically north of Gilman Boulevard. Conversely, in the PM, the southbound PM direction, that would be the graphic on the right, for the traffic entering into town at Gilman Boulevard, approximately 5% heads out to Newport Way when it gets to Newport, and about 7% goes off of Sunset Way. Heading further south, by the time you reach south of Miramont, or Tiger Mountain Road, and south of Cedar Grove, you've roughly got about 55% of the traffic still heading towards Highway 18 and points beyond. So what you're seeing in the north and southbound direction essentially is about 50, 55% of the traffic is passing through town. The remaining trips are originating and ending within the Issaquah Valley, and in the city of Issaquah. And you asked a question earlier about, is there any information related to traffic in the PM diverting to another route? If you notice, the consultant's note at the very bottom on the left in the PM, more, it's more varied than AM, because a high percentage of trips actually travels to SR-18 or south, so it varies.
There's another potential reason, too, in that in the morning, people are already had, all headed to work, I know that I don't mean all, but most, but in the evening, there are other things they're doing, so they're going to dinner, they're going to a movie, they're taking their, picking up their kids, and not necessarily taking the same routes, they have other, other, there are other factors besides just taking a different route, and so not everybody's headed home at the same time.
Sheldon, question? Chart on the left, so it only is tracking trips that originated south of Highway 18 or from Highway 18?
From Highway 18.
So this is trips, okay, so trips off 18, onto, onto Hobart Road North. That's, yeah, those all up, they add to 100, but we know that some traffic joins the trip north from May Valley Road, for example, or from Cedar Grove.
Correct.
So we're not, this doesn't break that out, so this doesn't tell us, this is only those that originated from 18?
But it, the volumes, you're right, people come and they come and they go, on and off the corridor, throughout the corridor. The data is respective of from Highway 18 to Gilman Boulevard.
Okay, so it says, it says from south of Highway 18, so it's not, is it Highway 18 travelers, or?
Well, they're picking up the traffic at Highway 18, so it could be south, or it could be coming along Highway 18, and relative to that data point, Maple Valley is south of that data point, so, but Highway 18 and the traffic coming straight through the interchange, southbound.
All right, thank you. And could you? Could you say a little bit about how this data is collected? Just, the idea that you can track a car from there, and you know where it turned?
Okay, now you're going to push my limits.
Well, no, it just, I do, it is, it just, okay, go ahead.
I know a little bit here, and I'll probably have to get some more help and answer that question at a later time. It's, the, the data is collected through, a lot of it is through the apps that are on your phone. The geographic information that you transmit through your GPS on your phone is sold and collected by agencies and consulting firms, so that they can literally track the car. They don't track you as a person, but they track the car, and where it started from, where, where it goes, it knows your movements.
They're tracking the phone.
They're tracking your phone.
Yeah, the consultant actually said that during the CIC, he said something like that, he talked about the wireless signal from phones as being a way to do that.
Yeah, and it comes from all the apps that people use on their phone.
Yeah.
And so, the data, just as any data, has some margin of error in it, because you may have two people in the car with two phones, and so it's, but it's good data, it gives you good information.
Right, and the reason I ask that is, it is, it's a reasonable question to ask, how do you know where they're actually going? And we didn't see, you know, people or, or other devices out there actually trying to track, or I'm not, I wasn't doing anything to be tracked, at least I didn't know it.
Right.
But it is using, it is using the phone wireless signal that it's tracking, okay?
Right. So, another piece of data that the consultant collected was the collision history, five-year collision history, and these heat maps show the areas along the corridor with different concentrations of accidents and types of accidents, specifically injuries or fatality-type accidents. The heat map shows, the deeper the red, the higher the number of collisions per mile that exist along that corridor, and then there are some red dots along the corridor. Let me see if I can find the cursor here. Ah. There it is. For instance, there's a red dot right here, which indicates a fatality accident, and I think there's a total of three of them along the corridor that, that you guys can see. And so you have a very high concentration of accidents, essentially north of Newport Way, where Newport Way comes into Front Street, along Front Street in this area, all the way through the interchange, there's a high concentration of injury-type accidents, and then conversely, you can see sections that have less than 10 collisions per mile in it, so the light green, or where there's nothing. So they put the collision history into a heat map, so graphically people could see what's going on in the corridor.
Good question on that one, Sheldon. Do we, I know we don't have data on State Route 900, but I know the volumes are at least 10,000 or 12,000 less vehicles ADT. So in terms of collision history, is it possible, when we actually look at our study, that we kind of balance it out with where an actual commuter route is, which is State Route 900, and see where we are in terms of collisions per mile and stuff? I know we don't have actual data, we didn't do the same study, but just sort of put some perspective on what, how Front Street is actually behaving, whether it is behaving like a state route, whether it's behaving like a local street compared to State Route 900, that'd be kind of interesting.
We can request the accident data from Washington State Department of Transportation, and put that together, probably come after the study's complete, but we can do that, and we'll also have to check into the ADT along 900. I'm not sure the numbers you mentioned are the positive.
Someone, someone that Kurt had on his map from last year, from 2016, or early 2017, I think?
Okay. Then the average travel speeds was another heat map that the consultants provided. There's a northbound in the AM, and there's a southbound PM heat map, that's on the left and the right, respectively. As you see in the AM in the northbound direction, there's a slowdown around Cedar Grove Road, Tiger Mountain Road, around Miramont, and, I'm trying to get the cursor, in this area right here, and then the traffic is relatively free-flowing through here, and then it gets to another larger red dot in the area where Newport comes in and Sunset Way, and then it goes back into kind of free-flow mode, relatively speaking, to I-90. In the PM, in the southbound direction, there's a slowdown that essentially goes throughout Issaquah, along the Front Street corridor, down towards the south end of Issaquah, and it looks like that's right about where Second Avenue comes in, and then it frees up a little bit, and then there's the parasailing facility right here, and so there's another congestion point there where people are turning in and out of the roadway and things like that, and then it's relatively free-flowing relative, again, to the slower areas along the corridor.
I don't know that I've ever been there during the PM southbound, what I would call any of it free-flowing.
It's relative. Yeah, it's relative. No, you're right, I mean, it's still slow, I'm not saying it's fast. It's moving along, though.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Sheldon?
Yes.
It, it's unfortunate that this particular slide, is that, that's not in the packet for today.
No, it's not, and we'll email that out to all the council members, this whole presentation.
Yeah, I think that's very important, because this projector up mounted behind me on the wall that's using this doesn't do a very good job with colors, and you, yeah, you said free-flowing, but the data in the actual original, because we had it from the CIC meeting, you know, does show a lot of it, it's, you can see five, on the left, it's going to gradient scale, yeah, and a lot of that is, most of that in the morning is 20 miles per hour, what you called free-flowing.
Yeah.
And so, and I think that's an important, because what does free-flowing mean? I mean, we have some average data here, and it's important, if we're going to undersee this, that we actually see the real data. This projector just doesn't do it, so hopefully everybody will get a hold of the real one. And southbound, same way, a lot of it, it does, there are places where it gets, the average gets up to 35, there's significant areas where it remains at 30, and basically the peak average all the way in the PM down to May Valley Road is 20.
Yes.
And so it's just, it's hard to see when you're looking at that slide right there.
It is, it is hard to see on this, this is just a graphical representation of the data.
Well, it does show this, like a solid red line all the way down, even though there's some light-colored bubbles, so.
Sheldon, one other thing I had never heard before was, on a two-lane road, you had said the actual capacity of free-flowing would be more like 1,200 vehicles.
Per lane.
Per lane. So what I was wondering is if it's possible for King County to tell us that, I know they may not have current data, but May Valley Road is also a two-lane road, and it connects to State Route 900, and if it also has a 1,200 per-lane capacity on that section of road, what counts they have in terms of what part of the morning commute is using that way to access State Route 900 and I-90? That would be interesting, if we have it.
And would there be different capacity considerations based on what type of road it is? So if you said, I think you said Front Street either weighed 1,200 an hour?
An engineering capacity for a lane that moves traffic in a relatively constant speed is roughly about 1,200 cars an hour. It doesn't matter what road you're on, one lane.
Or the mile per hour?
Pardon?
Or mile per hour? So.
Actually, data has been shown that, for instance, like on the interstates, it doesn't make sense logically, but it's actually, the interstate system moves more cars when it's going at an average speed of about 20, 25 mile per hour, than it does move in 60 mile per hour, because there's more gaps, larger spaces between the cars, and you're not moving as many cars. It's tighter, but everybody's moving along, and so you're moving more cars. Same thing on the local streets, or Hobart Road, May Valley, if you have people that are bumper-to-bumper, and they're just moving at 20 miles an hour, you're going to get about 1,200 cars an hour through.
That's, that's actually very illustrative. It would be interesting to know, in terms of our configuration of Front Street, which has crosswalks and stoplights and all these other turning movements, because it's in an urban area, whether or not the capacity for our two-lane road, the design capacity is 1,200 per lane versus May Valley, which has a light or a stoplight. versus May Valley, which has a light or a stoplight along its entire length. So if King County has got an engineering capacity for the two-lane May Valley versus our engineering capacity for Front Street, it'd be interesting to know what the two differences were. When you're doing your next.
Said you had, you were going to talk about next steps regarding the study.
Ah, yes, thank you. Thank you, State, National Department of Government. The next steps are, the consultant is taking this data and the information they've evaluated so far. And they have a toolbox of general ideas right now that they're going to sort through and develop some recommendations to put in the report. The report is expected to be issued in December, at which time we will provide a full briefing to the City Council on the final report.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for that information, Sheldon. And I was just going to say, as we're, as we're moving forward, the chart that did talk about miles per hour was really helpful. And now that we've talked about that last piece about looking at traffic flow and how many, how many cars are, you know, in each lane, but exactly how fast they're going and how many cars there are, that was just helpful to me. So the more data like that that we can include, that would be great.
Anything else?
Sheldon, when we launched this, approved this study, when we funded it, you know, at that time, back in 2016, you made a comment about the, like, what you thought the volume was. I think you said 30,000. Now, this is showing in one segment, the peak seems to be about 20. Do you just discuss, I mean, I'm not sure where you got your number before, but what do you, what do you say now? I mean, if someone were to say, hey, what's our volume? I look at that, and this data seems to say that the peak is 20,000.
The peak in this corridor study would be, the higher the numbers that are up there would be around 20,000 cars. The 30,000 number still is true, but it's between I-90 and Gilman Boulevard. We're running about 32,000 cars a day in that little stretch between I-90 and Gilman Boulevard.
And that, so that's north and south, so that's people.
Yeah, that's both directions.
Gilman, getting Gilman traffic.
ADT is considered both directions.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
I just have a data collection question. So before, we talked about app, apps, you know, being the method by which we collect the information, the feeder information. But the counts you're talking about, we get those differently, correct?
Yeah, the counts are done with tubes on the road.
Okay.
How are we going to take into account the improvements that are being made at Exit 25 of I-90? Because it seems like we're talking about a certain amount of traffic right now. Do we know what an improved Exit 25 on I-90 does or is projected to do to traffic volumes on this corridor?
An Exit 25 is?
Oh, sorry. Doesn't everybody know all them all by numbers? No, Tracy, it always annoys Tracy when I talk about Exit 15, 17, and 18. No, it's where Highway 18 meets I-90 in Snoqualmie, right by Snoqualmie Ridge.
Right, we don't know what that is going to do to the volumes of traffic through Issaquah. Hopefully, that interchange will improve enough to where it'll take some of the cars out of Issaquah and put them on Highway 18. That is also a larger project that the state needs to do as well as to increase the capacity of Highway 18 between I-90 and Hobart Road. Because right now, there's some two-lane sections in there that things get jammed up pretty fast in the PM as well as AM.
So improving Exit, improving that interchange, the Highway 18, 90 interchange, might not move that much traffic if in fact all it does is just cause the bottleneck to move down to where it's the one lane up by the pass?
Right, yeah.
It's unfortunate.
So the state doesn't have any money, the state hasn't allocated any money for that, for that widening?
We need our legislators on that.
Yes, we do.
So Sheldon, one more question or request, I guess. When we get the report in December, I had seen a traffic count map for the city. And I'm not sure if it was 2016 traffic counts or whatever, but it covered the majority of the city from I-90 all the way south through town. And it showed Newport Way and Sunset and Second. And it doesn't tell the history of how the traffic counts got to where they are, but it paints a picture of where we are today. It would be really helpful to have that also come as part of your presentation, sort of to set the stage and then talk about just pulling out one piece, which is Front Street. And if at that point in time, the county could also maybe tell us about May Valley Road's estimated or whatever their last count was from Issaquah-Hobart Road to State Route 900, that would be another great piece of the story to tell at the same time as we're looking at just the Front Street corridor.
Other questions? Okay, so I'm going to allow public comment. We only have one member on the public, so this shouldn't take very long. Mary.
I just want to review some of the public comment, not only my own, but some of the others that was made at the council. Was it infrastructure when it was presented? Some of the people that came were from the May Valley and Cedar Grove area. And they were wanting to know if separate counts were done for dual-haul trucks because they do routinely come from Cedar Grove and then because of the ban in Issaquah, turn on to May Valley. And they do cause a lot of congestion along there, especially in the turn lanes, and also cause accidents. So that was one thing that came up. And Cedar Grove does have a lot of commuter traffic on it. There's a lot of people that come up from Renton. So they just pick which is ever the better, May Valley or Cedar Grove. But in the morning, those are both backed up. Cedar Grove is actually backed up further than May Valley in the morning to come north. In the south, it's, in the evening, it's not. But I know from every morning listening to the radio that that's backed up there. The other public comment was, was why have all the capacity for the bridges been removed from Hobart Road? And there was a question as whether they, some of those bridges actually could handle the dual-haul trucks. And somebody was asking if that could be asked of the county. And I think that's a good one because there's a lot of small old bridges there. And can they really handle, not only on Hobart Road, but can May Valley's roads actually handle all the dual-haul traffic physically that is being put on it? The other things that came up was also where are some of these cars stopping that are coming up? We know they're going to the parking rite and filling that up. And could we somehow do some counts on where these cars are ending up in Issaquah? And if they're ending up in the parking rides? Or if they're ending up along our parking rite area here that we have out here on Rainier and First Avenue and in the local neighborhoods where they're coming and parking during the day and getting on the transit bus? Those are the other concerns that we had. And I also brought up is I really wish we would have also counted the number of single occupancy cars. Because my count tells me on a daily basis, there's only one out of 20 cars has more than two people in it in the morning during the commute time. And I count those almost every day.
Thank you. Unless we have anything else for Sheldon? Any more comments other than, thank you very much for doing this presentation again. Appreciate it. Anything else? Then we're adjourned.